Good afternoon, everyone. I call to order the January 23rd, 2023 Business Meeting for the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Ms. Wagner, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bolton. Mr. Craig.
Here.
Ms. Jones.
Here.
Dr. Moffett. Mr. Morosky.
Here.
Mrs. Weinberg.
Here.
President Lindy.
Here. Members of the public online who wish to speak during Hearing of the Public may do so by clicking the chat button now. That feature will be open for your requests for five minutes. Please submit your name, your affiliation, your school, community, your topic, and your contact information if you would like a direct response to any question you might have. We are going to start this evening with any updates from our superintendent.
Yes, thank you so much. So we are starting with our update for today is just really to update collectively update the board and the community on a process that we have for our magnet school programs. Three of our magnet school programs where there was a change. Rob, I think you have the information already. So while we're pulling that. So I'll go ahead and start talking through it as we're pulling it up. Definitely was uploaded into Board Docs as well. I'll continue, Board President, if that's fine, as we're going through the process and then we'll be able to pull those slides up. So we're looking at our three schools that in terms of aligning our prior magnet changes and designations changes with transportation eligibility. So more than three years ago, our district ended the use of the Padilla and college prep names that were associated with transportation and magnet lottery changes were put into effect. So this really is correcting a process that actually occurred over three years ago, but it's important for us to make sure that we talk about where we go in terms of next steps and what we're looking to do in terms of those. So the school, while the process was ended, there was not the overall procedures that were put in place so that students were not still assigned or accepted through the lottery process. So schools continued to accept enrollment through the magnet lottery and magnet enrollment was open schoolwide instead of just for the specific grades and grade levels. So this was at Codel and Mount Washington where magnets were grades four through six. And at that time, Silverton was a Padilla program was schoolwide. Addressing these inconsistencies will impact very few students. However, it is important for us to make sure that the process that has been used is now in alignment with what the expectations were of the board. The number of students accepted and enrolled through the magnet process has been very limited. So if you'll look on the chart, over the last several years, last year there were eight students at Silverton and this year there were 10 at Silverton and one at Codel. So how this impacts enrollment? All current students can continue to remain enrolled until they exit the school. While the magnet lottery no longer applies for new students enrolling, all other enrollment options remain based on space availability. So there are three options there. The first is neighborhood enrollment, students who live in the district and in the neighborhood attendance area. So that would be the first for each of the three schools. Out of neighborhood attendance area, students who live in the district but are out of the neighborhood attendance area for the school. So they do what's called a special assignment in order for them to be able to be enrolled in the school and out of district enrollment, and that's students who live outside of the district. I think where we talk about the impact, however, is while there's still opportunity for students to remain enrolled in the program through a special assignment if they don't live in the attendance area or they live outside of the district, it is important that we discuss transportation and how transportation will proceed for the students that are currently there. Any new students that enroll under these conditions would not receive transportation to the school. So we do want to make sure that that's clear moving forward. Over the next two years, transportation will be brought into alignment with the current eligibility rules. Those students currently receiving out of boundary transportation due to magnet status will continue to do so for the next two years. So year one would be the 23, 24 school year. So the students that are already there on magnet status, even though magnet status was closed, those students will continue to receive magnet transportation. And the same for school year 24, 25. So for Codel right now, that applies to nine students total. For Mount Washington, no students really qualify through other means. And for Silverton, that is 106 students. And of those 106 students, 62 of them are grades three and below. This is relevant because as you recall from the previous slide, the magnet program for Silverton was designed to be all grade levels, wherein the other two schools, it was four through six. So students receiving out of boundary transportation through eligibility factors other than the magnet status are not impacted. So there's no impact to them. That simply means if students live in the school's attendance area, they're outside of the one mile walking radius to the school, they would still receive transportation. Students will not be able to add out of boundary transportation if they are not already receiving it this school year. So while we are honoring the students that are there, giving them two years in terms of transportation, we'll continue to provide transportation for them. However, if they don't already have transportation this year, out of boundary transportation would not be able to be added after this school year, even if students are enrolled in the school. So essentially what that means is if students are looking to stay at the school and they don't have transportation after the next two years and that doesn't give them enough time, then we have to determine what their school placement would be because they wouldn't be eligible for transportation after the 24, 25 school year and it can't be added this year. And then students not currently receiving transportation remain subject to the CPS transportation eligibility requirements, which is on our webpage and also linked here in the presentation. So next steps. In terms of next steps, we have met with all of the principals to make sure that they are aware, that they're able to talk about the process and the procedures to their school teams. Communication materials and FAQs will be shared with principals, I'm sorry, was shared with principals on Thursday, January 19th. Principals will review this information with their ILTs and their LSDMCs the week of the 23rd or as soon as possible after the communication materials are received. The principals will communicate with families the week of the 23rd, and that's this week. All families will be reminded of the name change and magnet status because some of the buildings still show the name on the building. So we want to make sure that all of the changes go into effect at the same time and that's clear they understand why that name is changing because the program has not been there in over three years. Only families impacted with transportation would be a part of the overall communication about transportation. So we don't feel that it's necessary to cause concern or alarm to other families that aren't impacted by the transportation conversation, but we do want to make sure that those that are impacted, they know that they have a two-year window after this year to continue to have transportation and if transportation is not already provided, that it would not be added for this year. That's it for the update. I didn't know if there were any questions.
Thank you, Superintendent. Do board members have any questions about the presentation? Ms. Bolton.
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation. Some of us have waited years to hear this presentation. So thank you. Checking the historical record, though, in addition, I would like if you could check as well the status of Woodford from previous year's decisions is been classified a magnet, I believe, for arts and what have you because that neighborhood is so committed to arts. And then somewhere in my now very old memory, I think there was a time too that JP Parker was college prep and of course Roberts was Padilla. So just a question to you, not going to have to be answered tonight, but just to check the record, because this was all happening about the same time, if I recall.
Thank you. The response to both of the two, they were included initially in that change. One concern with Woodford is Woodford does not currently have a district boundary. So it was set up as a full dedicated magnet school. So as we begin to look at where we go next, we really have to have discussion around what happens in terms of what's happening in the school there as a part of the overall program audits and conversations because they don't currently have an attendance area. All of the other three schools have an attendance area, they don't. In terms of JP Parker, one of the reasons that we paused in terms of JP Parker is because right now the citywide attendance boundary is set up for JP Parker. Having some of the conversations that we've had around the program audit and the things that we may be thinking about at JP Parker, we did not want to remove the opportunity for that boundary and then open it up to the city once again and have to add the boundary back. So it's just a part of a larger conversation in terms of where we go with JP Parker. What we are not doing is accepting students into the magnet program for JP Parker right now, and they would still have the same requirements unless there is a change in terms of recommendation for where we go with programming for the school.
So those two, because they don't have the boundaries, they're considered right now citywide magnets?
That's correct. And aside, so JP Parker does have a boundary, but Woodford does not. And so we would really have to create a boundary for Woodford right now because it is considered what we would call a dedicated magnet. So the students come from all over the district to go to school there, but none are specifically assigned to school there.
And for Roberts?
Right. So Roberts, the conversation for Roberts is Roberts currently the population that they are serving. They don't receive full transportation across the district right now, but we'll double-check that to make sure they haven't been a part of the conversations at this point.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Any other questions for our superintendent? Okay, thank you very much. We'll keep moving. Before we move into the next part of our agenda, I understand that Vice President Craig might have an announcement, if that's okay with the rest of our board members. He is, I'll let him answer that question.
So I come bearing gifts actually today for everybody, and I'll do a little bit more in kudos about why I have these gifts here. But this past weekend was the High School Ethics Bowl. And so what I have done my best to do, I'm going to ask Doc to help me out here, but each of you all gets a High School Ethics Bowl shirt. This is the first High School Ethics Bowl in the city of Cincinnati, the regional competition hosted by the UC's new Cincinnati Ethics Center. And so we'll all get that. There's a little bag and included in the bag is also a letter. So everyone will get one as best as I could figure out what your sizes were because I only got this information right before the meeting on my way down from Buffalo. But I'll give specific kudos out later on with more specifics about the Ethics Bowl.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Craig, and perhaps more in kudos, but congratulations to the students and to their teachers for the hard work and the recognition, particularly on something like ethics. So that's wonderful. Yeah, round of applause. That's great. Okay, so we are now at the part of our meeting where we will have the Hearing of the Public. And we'll go to our online folks in a moment. Mr. Hoying or Rob, how many folks online tonight? We have no folks online tonight. Okay. We have, I think I have one speaker who's signed up here, so we may have one speaker, which is CFT President Julie Sellers. We'll invite her down to the podium. Any other speakers for this evening? Okay. Take your time, President Sellers, and whenever you are ready.
Good evening, members of the board. You're going to be voting on something this evening in the superintendent's recommendations, and it's for extended time for tutoring at Riese Price. Riese Price submitted those names, but the pay is the incorrect amount, so I don't want you voting on an incorrect amount. I think it's in your packet for $19 or something an hour. So if you can vote on the corrected amount, that would be helpful so we don't have a problem later. Is that a change? Can you have a change here so you're not voting on the wrong amount?
So we're looking for that information, and when we have an update, we will.
It's in the superintendent's recs and it's about, it's near the bottom. It is for teacher tutors for after-school from Riese Price.
Okay.
But I want to make sure.
And make sure that that's right.
Do you need to know the correct amount? That's a teacher extended time, teacher B.
Thank you.
So do you need the correct amount to make it corrected? Thirty-three ninety.
Yeah, I think we're not going to get too into the personnel in the large group, but our superintendent is going to look into it and will update us.
Okay, but if you're voting on it tonight, I don't want it getting stuck from the treasurer's office as the wrong amount. Does that make sense?
It does.
I just wanted to catch it before it becomes a problem later.
So do we.
So thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay.
Oh, I did also want to say that we're going to be having, there was a big change in the ordinance with the city around abatements. It's going to have a huge impact on us. It's a real expansion of abatements citywide. We're going to be having a public forum in February, and I would like to know when we had the TIP forum and the abatement forums before we used this room for that, who would I talk to to schedule that?
So we will make sure that we get a response back to you.
Okay.
And so does the administration have the question from President Sellers? Would you say it one more time?
To use either this room or the banquet room to have a roundtable forum around abatements because there was a recent ordinance passed by the city for the expansion of abatements citywide. Okay, but it's going to be in February. Okay, thank you.
Moving right along, we will proceed into Item E, which is approval of minutes. I think before I ask for a motion, I think Treasure Wagner may have an update for us.
Yes, we wanted to pull these from the agenda tonight. I discovered a clerical error late in the afternoon. I didn't have time to correct it and resubmit them. So if you'll pull them tonight, we'll make sure they get corrected before the next board meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Do board members have any questions that they'd like to ask? Vice President Jones?
This is specific to the superintendent's report?
No, these are the minutes that are next on the agenda.
The minutes, thank you. Okay.
The new employee doing this didn't understand that the tax and budget hearing had to be first and so it got missed.
Thank you.
So we'll fix them and get them back to you.
Thanks, Board Member Jones. Mr. Morosky, did you have a question? Other questions? So we'll vote on those minutes next time. Thanks, Treasure Wagner, for your help in making sure that everything is, Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. We'll move right along to Item E, which is our Audit Committee Report, which I believe will come from Mr. Vice President Craig.
So it was an excellent meeting of the Audit Committee. It's the first meeting of this new term of the Audit Committee, and so we had at that meeting, the two new people voted on or selected, or I guess they nominated themselves and are the only ones that ran. So and there will be, there's resolutions for each of those folks, I believe, for today's meeting. So we also reviewed, sorry, scrolling down the screen here, but we also reviewed audit committees or the audit that are in progress as well as the status of the audits that were already completed. Those are also provided. The reference, again, some of the audits that were getting started, the audits that were done, where advisory things were done for those as well. Those should be noted. And then we also discussed the chief audits mid-year evaluation. And so that's the process that needs to be done. He provided a copy of it, and I believe a copy should have been distributed out to all the members of the Audit Committee as well, should have been shared with the board if it hadn't already. So those reviews need to be done for her performance. And so that was the majority of what we discussed. I submit these minutes as written.
Thank you, Vice President Craig. Do board members have any questions about the report from the Audit Committee? Ms. Bolton?
I appreciate Vice President Craig reporting. I was not in attendance. Just to reemphasize, the internal auditors mid-year, I think it was kind of due maybe today or recently or soon, he did send it to all of the community audit members, as Member Craig pointed out, but also to all board members. To the degree that board members feel comfortable answering particular questions because of the work of the chief, as we now are calling her, please submit that those comments, if you would, back to, I think it's to her?
It's to Dan, full house.
Oh.
To Dan, I believe, or I believe it's to Dan that goes to or to.
The instructions are there, yeah. To the chair of the Audit Committee.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Did you have additional questions or comments?
I just thought he did a superb job.
I thought superb too.
I thought so.
Excellent. Thank you.
He did a permanent job.
Any other questions about the Audit Committee Report from board members? Okay, I need a motion to adopt the singular committee report we have this evening.
I move.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Any additional discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Committee report is adopted. So we're going to turn it back over to our superintendent for Item F, which is a presentation on the results of our recent climate survey.
Thank you, Board President. As a follow-up to our climate survey that we completed in December, we put the climate survey out to all of our families, students, grades three through 12, and all staff. And so we do thank our staff and our parents and our students for completing the survey. This information is acting as a baseline for us as we really begin to look at next steps for how we move forward. So we'll cover the following four areas very quickly as a part of the information. The purpose, the survey design and response rates, looking at the results, and then any next steps we have from there. So the overall purpose, why do we survey staff and family and students? I will say that last year or the last several, last couple of years, the district has done surveys with families and surveys with staff. Previously, we did a modified version of the survey with staff of Gallup, and the year before that, there was a piloted group that did the survey as well. For families, the survey that we've done the most frequently has been one that was designed by PASAP, which really went in as kind of what we would call happiness surveys, a one-question survey that would allow parents to say how they were feeling about their school environment for that week. This is the first time collectively that we have surveyed all students or surveyed students, and we surveyed all students, grades three through 12. Why do we do this? Because we want to make sure that we're hearing our stakeholders' voices and to inform action planning at the district and the building level. It's important that we review data through consistent dashboards that places equity at the forefront of our analysis and also to strengthen our stakeholder engagement to support strong student academic and social outcomes for our students. So hearing the voices are important, and we do see all of these individuals as stakeholders. So the principles of engaging in survey results. The voice, present the data as voice and as the beginning of a conversation. The focus, choose a few areas of focus as possible. So kind of like the conversation that we had around setting goals, it's important to identify the areas that you're looking at really doing some work around and then preparing and planning and doing implementation planning around those areas. And coherence, connecting the topics, questions, and insights to existing priorities and initiatives. And last but not least is action, offer action steps and strategies to improve our areas of focus. Survey topics and respondent information. And as was shared with you, each of the topics along the left-hand side were topics that were a part of the different surveys. I did provide for you at the onset of the surveys, the actual PDF of the survey questions that families, students, and parents were completing and staff were completing, but this gives it to you in one chart and then who it applied to in each of the groups. So for our students, we see they covered all of the areas except professional learning, school fit, and staff leadership relationships and well-being. And then for staff, belonging, engagement, rigorous expectations, school safety, and teacher-student relationships. And then you see the same information provided for families. Student results, content, and overview. So the information that I provided to you really was pretty comprehensive and covered all of the survey results for each of the individual areas. While that is, we're doing the information tonight at a high level, I did think it was beneficial for the board to have all of that data if they chose to dig into the information just a little bit more. So the student survey topics included the areas that are listed here on the screen, and it went from rigorous expectations through school safety. For the free responses, for seventh and twelfth graders, we did free response questions. And the free response question was what additional help do you need to be successful this year? So that allows students to really type in just a response or answer to that question. And the additional questions were around on a scale of one to 10, a scale of one to five, I'm sorry, do you feel your school helps prepare you for the future? How do you learn about things happening at school? So those were two additional questions that were asked from the student survey. So thinking about our respondents and the demographics for our respondents, so the survey results are broken into three through sixth grade and then seven through 12th grade. So that allows us to do an analysis globally at both of those levels. We can go specifically into the individual grade levels to identify if we're seeing things at the third grade level that may not be the same at the fifth grade level, but the number that you see as a composite is third through sixth grade and then seven through 12. So we are pleased that over 8,000 students responded to the survey, and this was the first time that that gave them the opportunity to do that, 8,439 students. The other thing that you see on the slide is the breakdown in terms of demographics for the students. So for example, of our students that took the survey, we have, you know, 17% of them that were students with special needs. We have of the third through sixth graders, you see that it was pretty even across the board, about 2,000 or a little more than 2,000 at each of the grade levels. And you also see the breakdown by race as well as our ESL, ELL status as well. Our top respondents in terms of our response rates, so each, the way that the survey is done, each person received, each staff member received their own link for the survey. So because we don't see any of the survey information, it goes to them. So because we don't see any of the survey information, it goes to them, back to the company, it does not come to us, so all of it's anonymous. But what we do have is the connection to each of the schools, and you see our top five respondents were Hyatt Park, Kilgore, Data Montessori, Sands, and Ethel M. Taylor. And so Ethel Taylor, we identified students that were 95% or higher in terms of that area. For our seventh through 12th grade students, we had 7,000, over 7,000 seventh through 12th grade students that responded as well. And when we think about the breakdown, we see that for the most part, looks like our ninth grade students had the highest response rate, with 1,600 students that responded there. And even though our 12th grade students are beginning to think about graduation, almost 800, 759 of them responded. So we do think that next year we'll see more in terms of the responding for our seniors. So more space, more work to do in this space as we think about high school and everything transformation for high school, because we, our response rate overall was 49% for our high school students. And our highest school levels for high school, and actually this was seven through 12, that's how we get Hartwell included there as well, because they do have seventh grade students, and so does Sailor Park, and me, and Roberts. So really, it's not pulling out our high schools here, it's really pulling out our K-8 schools, or schools that are in the K-8 organization. So we have a lot of work to do in terms of the high school space. But Hartwell, Sailor Park, and me, SCPA at 80%, and they were the highest responding rate for our high school students, and then Roberts Academy. So what did the data say to us? And this is really exciting, one of the great parts about working with Panorama, is it gives us information and data as we are assessed and compared to other school districts across the country, and more specifically to like school districts across the country. And so the percentiles that we're looking at is a percentile rank, depending on where we are for all of the other individuals that are also a part of Panorama. It gives us really good baseline information for how we get started and what we're looking to do moving forward. So I think that, I won't go through each of the individual areas, but I think that you see in terms of percentages, how our students responded. And again, in the email that I sent to you, you have the individual questions that go along with each of those areas, but you're seeing where we are in response rates. One of the areas that we would like to, and we'll do this on the other slide as well, but it was exciting to see our students that did respond, 57% of them felt that they did have rigorous school expectations, but that was still one of the lower areas across the country in terms of thinking about rigor, and the level of involvement of students in class. And then a high area for our third through sixth grade students, our third through sixth grade students thought that they had rigorous school expectations as well, but that was in the second percentile in terms of looking at overall, so that's a space for us to work. Another area to call out here is our student-teacher relationships. That was one of our highest across the board for our third through sixth grade students, which we thought was very positive. So question comparison, and this is just pulling out just a few of the questions so that you're able to see how we are spotlighting those areas. So the question topic under school rigorous expectations, since that was one of the higher areas of favorability, how much do your teachers encourage you to do your best? For our third through sixth grade students, that was 76%, and for our seventh through 12th grade students, 65%. So still more work to do there, but really excited, because our students definitely see that teachers are encouraging them, and they're encouraging them to do their best. And another question as a part of the survey, for teacher-student relationships, how respectful are your teachers toward you? And this was another really high area across the board, and one to applaud our teachers for, 77% for our third through sixth grade students, and 75% for our seventh through 12th grade students. So just really excited about that also. So I think many of you know how the word clouds go. When you start asking for questions around, your open-ended questions, it gives you the opportunity to gather information based on repeated words. The words that are the darkest are the words that are repeated the most often. And so what we're really digging into is the area for tutoring, as well as motivation. Not only is it one of the larger words, but those two are the darkest words across the board, so it does give us more to really look at in terms of looking at those free response questions and how students responded to that. And that was our seventh through 12th grade students. For our staff overview, same kind of breakdown, same kind of information. Our free response questions for our staff was, what can school or district leaders do to better support your well-being? What has helped you most in managing work-related stress? If you could change anything about working at your school or office, what specific changes would you make? And that was for the free response questions. And then the additional questions were on a scale of one to five as well, the same questions that we asked to the students. Do you feel CPS provides educational services that prepare students for life? And do you believe the messages you receive from CPS provide value to you? So this is allowing us to gather some information about not just what we're communicating, but how we're communicating that information, so that we are better responsive to those that we're communicating to. And what we found with staff, and I think that there are some glaring areas here as we look at getting started, across the board, a space to really dig into a bit more is professional learning. What we are also disaggregating, that's not disaggregated at this time, but what we are also disaggregating is, is the survey was done with all staff, and so we do want to disaggregate the survey based on our certificated staff versus our non-certificated staff, because we do believe that we'll see some differences and nuances within the data once we're able to look at it that way, but that has been a special request that we've made. So the two at the bottom, well-being and belonging, you'll notice that they don't have a percentile rank. These two are fairly new to the survey platform for staff, and so we're also helping to provide some of that baseline information. Unpacking professional development favorability, so there is a platform that allows us not only to look at the data individually for the questions, but you'll notice that there is a little arrow here, and so we can click on the arrow and it drills down another set of information. But the question specifically, this was the lower question of all of the series of questions for staff, how do teachers and staff respond to the question? So at your district, how valuable are the available professional development opportunities? And that was 32%. Overall, how much do you learn from the leaders at your school or office? That was 41%. And you see how the responses continue from there. So this is really an area for us to look at around professional development, and making sure, again, that we're responsive to the needs of our team members. Again, what can your school or district leadership do to better support your well-being? And we have a word cloud here as well. One of the big ones in terms of the words is security. And so with the team, we're digging into the security a bit, because there is physical security, there's emotional security, there's how we think of social-emotional security. So we want to make sure that we are addressing the right concern as we're looking at security. Another big one is listen, and I thought that was really important as we began to pull that out, but really, again, digging into where we are with that and what that means collectively. And last but not least, our family responses. And our family responses were broken down in many of the same areas for our, this, we did not have an open response question here for families, but we did have the questions around, do you feel CPS provides educational services that prepare your students for life? And the question around messaging and communication. Collectively, our family survey area is the area where we want to focus a bit more next year. We had over, I believe it was about 2,800 families, that, parents that responded to this question, and our goal, of course, is to increase that number across the board. So when we look at our percentages, our school safety percentage was the highest, so that, of course, gives us even more information to go and dig into, because on the, on the word cloud for the staff, security was listed there, so we do want to make sure that, of the kind of safety that we're talking about for our staff members. School climate was at 65, and our lowest area for families was around family engagement. And so that gives us a lot of information around what we do next. So overall, next steps, this information was shared with principals on the 19th. They receive individual information for their school. Each of the department leads receives individual information for their department, and that they can actually drill into to get more specific concerns around those. Tomorrow will be shared with assistant principals as part of their assistant principals meeting. They'll have an opportunity to unpack their results, create a data deck, which will be shared with their staff, LSMC, and families. On January the 20th, there was the PD workshop for the directors and managers as well to do the same kind of work. In terms of improvement opportunities, schools and departments, schools and departments will really begin to dig deeper into their data, selecting those three or four areas that are high areas of focus for them, with some recommendations for what they can do to improve in those areas. And then our next survey for this year, it will actually occur the beginning of May, and that'll give families opportunities, families, staff, and students the opportunity to respond to the survey, so that we are able to see what kind of improvement we've been able to make from the survey in December. Overall district glows, grows, and improvement goals. So we called some of these out, I called some of these out during the overall presentation, but our glows, just across the board, rigorous expectations for our third through 12th grade students. Staff belonging was our glow, the highest percentage there for the survey was in belonging. And for family, the highest rate was in school safety. For our areas of glow, and it's interesting in terms of this area, because it was different, grow, I'm sorry, it was different across the board. So for third through sixth grade students, it was school safety. For seventh through 12th grade students, it was school engagement. For staff, it was professional learning, and for family, it was family engagement. So making sure that each of these areas, we are seeing an overall increase and improvement based on the information provided in the survey. I will share that this presentation, as well as the presentation I did earlier, is on Board Docs as well, so anyone that is watching or in the audience that would like to have the presentation, it is there and available.
Thank you very much, Superintendent, for your presentation. Comments, questions from Board Members? Mr. Morosky?
Thank you, President Lindy, and thank you, Superintendent, for showing this. I think I said this once before, and we were talking about transportation, but I do believe it bears repeating. I'm not in the habit of seeing presentations like this, so I appreciate seeing it, particularly when it's kind of a warts and all sort of thing. It hasn't always been the norm, and I think we're only going to address these important issues if we do get the warts and all, so thank you for that. Two things that just kind of stuck out to me. One is how sad it is nationally that urban public school districts, it's in the green, so to speak, that family engagement is so low, or at least folks feel that it's so low, which I think explains a little bit to me and a lot of the laziness around it, but I think this is evidence of getting on the right track. And then the only other, there's a lot of things I could say, but the two things that sort of stuck out the most on the last slide, the piece about the three to six saying school safety was a concern, and then families saying they felt good about it. I can't help but overanalyze that with the young people growing up in this country today, like, just assuming school is unsafe, and going into school assuming it's an unsafe place because of the news and our country's obsession with violence and guns. And I guess all I'm saying is that's really sad to me, because I know, particularly through the Work and Policy Committee, how many steps we've taken to ensure our schools are safe. I know that they are safe, and the families, it makes me really happy to see that, but it also makes me extraordinarily sad, especially having a little one, you know, who's going to be in a very safe neighborhood school soon, but that he someday is going to assume schools aren't safe. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Any other comments, questions from Board Members? Vice President Craig?
I want to start by echoing Mike's appreciation for, I think it is really helpful to be able to see in a digestible way the results we're getting. I wanted to highlight one thing, though, and I think this is something we struggle with as a district, but I think it's something everyone struggles with, which is the kind of development of our professionals here and staff. And I think it's a hard balance between what is successful and what is valuable and appreciable to what their, what we're tasked, get them to do. And so I appreciate, you know, kind of understanding is from the district's perspective that it's something we got to figure out, right? We have to develop our staff, our teachers, and give them, but give them something that's valuable and useful. And so in some ways, it's a difficult challenge to do, but it's also different at each level and each position. So that level of understanding is something I really appreciate seeing here. I also want to also just kind of echo Mike on the comment about school safety, and I think this is one of those things as well, we saw from the staff that security was an important, one of the most things, one of the things that were most important mentioned. And it's so hard to do with that in a context of a world in which we're living in right now, where, you know, every day and every week, there's another shooting. Every day in the week, there's another person who decides that this, the best means of addressing their issues is to use violence. And even in our schools, to deal with some of the things that are people bringing in from outside of the district into the district, and outside of the school building into the school building. And so I think it is just a challenge to really make some students feel the way we want them to feel, but to, more than that, for them to know that they are that safe, right? Like, even if we have them feeling that safe, we want to make sure that they actually are in that position. So I appreciate the care and concern that I'm sure that you all are taking to really think about that and address it in a way that gives everybody that sense of safety and security that, you know, we want them to have.
Thank you, Vice President Craig. Other Board Member questions, comments? Ms. Bolden?
Yes, I appreciate the presentation and the work. I'm interested in the one question about what can district or school leadership do to improve your well-being? Normally, the question would have been, improve your performance or instructional capability or whatever, so I think that's an interesting shift, at least for the time being. And when you mentioned security, I think part of that security from staff is job security. I really do, that there's a sense, whether, you know, teachers are being attacked for whatever curricular issues there might be, or, you know, change in administration, or budget process, or whatever. They have great trepidation about that. And not surprised, unfortunately, about the PD piece. It's one more measure as to why we, you know, elevated, I think, HR to transportation as a concern operationally some, a couple of months ago. So once again, we, obviously, a place where we have to focus. So appreciated the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Bolden. Any other Board Members? Ms. Jones?
Yes, just a very quick comment. I, too, am very pleased with the information and the realization that this is baseline, and that there's always room to grow, and I look forward to the next one. There are certain, and I won't go into the details specifically about which ones I'm paying attention to, but clearly, you articulated in certain, in certain areas where we want to grow and whatever. Overall, I want to, I would love to see the response rate increase overall, because the more we get, the more information we have. But this is a good starting place, and thank you for sharing the information.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Any other last comments? I will share briefly, then, just before we move on, and invite Superintendent to share any responses she has. Echo, I think, colleagues, I think, who have been around for a couple of years, it is new and different still, to Mr. Morosky's point, I think, to get under the hood, real, face the facts, but keep the faith information about some of the challenges that we're up against. And I think from a leadership and culture perspective, I just wanted to express some gratitude for that. I also think this goes back a couple of years, but I have shared in these meetings my concern with some of our past surveys, and how poorly we were able or unable to speak to whether or not that represented the district as a whole. And I think we, that's not a knock on the folks who were necessarily in some challenging situations, under some tight circumstances, but this represents such a wonderful step forward. I think to see not just the number of students and staff, in particular, students and staff, we'll get families, the number who are responding, but to know that 84% of those student respondents in the lower grades were receiving a free reduced-price lunch. And you look at the racial breakdown, you look at the school breakdown, are there opportunities for improvement? Sure, but this is... Sure, but this is quite representative of our district, and I think that's, that's because now we know what to do, and I, I appreciate that. So I think, I just wanted to, to say a couple of last things. The fact that strong student teacher relationships is a strength, I think is so wonderful, and I think it speaks to the hard work of our teachers in classrooms every day. Being a teacher is the hardest job I've ever had, and I think the ability to build relationships with young people is just so important, and I want to say thank you to the people who do that. And also that as a parent, the safety item just leaps out of the deck from my perspective. And I, I don't know if this is true for, for everybody, but my, my sense is that you, you get a, a different reaction on school safety and the risk of school shootings from parents and teachers than you do from other people in America. And I appreciate all of the work that you're doing and that we're doing on that front, and want to say thank you. Anything you want to share as we close out in response?
I would just say thank you, and thank you for the feedback. One of the things that the principals shared to the point of around family engagement or family responses is, you know, we're excited that across the district, we have twenty-eight-hundred families that responded, but when you're an individual school, you think about sixty-five schools, you're an individual school and trying to use data that's actionable, it's difficult to do that when you're making those determinations or recommendations based on twenty-three people. So I think, or the thing that's important is that we also begin to look at the progress monitoring, opportunities for schools to do. They, principals really began to dig into this data, but also being just as transparent with the staff, with the parents, and with the students, doing more information to, getting more information from them, using the survey again as the starting point. So thank you again for the feedback, and we look forward to improved results as we move forward.
Thank you very much. Sounds like we might have a last comment from Ms. Bolden.
You know, following up on what Superintendent just mentioned, and knowing that we are going to be, you know, making decisions about some more strategic plan engagement, the fact about that, that the school site, it's not a, it's not a sampling perhaps that is, as you said, actionable. It might be important as we think about the strategic plan on vision, mission, and forecast that there might be some effort to do some sort of representative school site engagement. We can't maybe do all sixty-five, but your focus on the school site itself, that might lend itself to getting a little bit, or a lot more, engagement or well-rounded engagement if we concentrate a little bit more on school sites. And we don't normally do that, so that might be something of interest.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Bolden. Thank you, Superintendent Wright. We'll move right along to item H on our agenda, which is the superintendents of schools. Do we have any retirements this evening? I skipped resolutions. I apologize, everybody. Oh, we did have a question come up earlier about whether there were other minutes that we could approve other than the, the business meeting. There is a pagination issue that runs across all sets of minutes, so we're going to hold them until those are, the clerical issues fixed, and then we'll do those next time. But we have two resolutions this evening. One is reappointing a set of audit committee members. Is there a board member who would like to present that resolution?
Okay. No, I can do it.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Will you introduce the first resolution, please? Ms. Bolden is going to be doing the second one.
Resolution, reappointing audit committee members, which includes Tim Crossit, Liz Guthridge, and Dan Holhouse for the periods of one-one, twenty-twenty-three through twelve-thirty-one, twenty-twenty-five, as it has written.
Thank you very much, Mr. Craig. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Bolden. Any discussion on the first resolution? Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolden?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Ms. Bolden, would you introduce our second resolution, please?
Yes, and this is for the committee members or the?
Yes, we've-
Chairpiece.
Correct.
Great. Like these folks. And again, for the public's benefit, we are fortunate, one of the few districts in the state of Ohio to have a community audit committee. These people do a great job for us, appreciate it. This is a resolution appointing audit committee chair and vice chair for the terms of one-twenty-three to, well, it goes on and on. Terms for the chairperson is one year, and we are nominating or accepting the nominations made by the audit committee for Daniel Holhouse as chair and Liz Guthridge for vice chair, and thankful for their leadership. I so move.
Thank you, Ms. Bolden. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Any discussion on the resolution appointing audit committee chair and vice chair? Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolden?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes.
I made a mistake in saying the previous chair, Mr. Tim Heldman, for serving as chair for a number of years, so thank you for his service.
Thank you, Ms. Heldman.
He's a former student.
For, for anybody who, we'll, we'll get into our superintendent's section here in just a second, but for, for anybody who is listening who has not taken a look at our audit committee, I do think it's a, a wonderful part of the work that the community and the board and the administration do together, I think to leverage local expertise and do everything we can to make sure that we're doing right by taxpayer money and that we are making a difference for, for kids. And it's a, my first year on the board, I got to be on the audit committee, and it is a difference, I think, and special thing. So now I think we're ready for any retirements that we have this evening.
Yes, we only have one person today, and it is within the civil service personnel, so we would like to congratulate Bonnie McKiever, food, food service helper with the Mount Airy School. We would like to, of course, thank her for her service for the district and also for the students that she was able to serve, and we wish her all of the best, and that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. We did have a question come up as we get into superintendent's recommendations. I think what we're going to do is invite a motion in a second, and then during discussion, if there are any amendments or changes that either the administration or board members would like to do with respect to the superintendent recommendations, we can work it through in that, in that manner. So is there a motion to adopt the superintendent's recommendations for this evening?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
As we enter discussion, are there any desires to amend or change part of the superintendent's recommendations, Superintendent?
Yes, aboard president, so just to be responsive to the question about the input for the teachers, there are several different rates that can be input for teachers. This was done at the school level, so we want to make sure that we follow up with the principal, just to verify, but it looks like the rate for these teachers would be thirty-three-nineteen per hour and not the nineteen-seventy-seven that's listed in the superintendent's.
Great. So is there a, a request from the administration to, to pull an item so that we can then vote on at a future date?
Actually, my request at this point, after verification with the team, is that we update the hourly rate to thirty-three-nineteen per hour.
In this report tonight?
In this, in this report tonight.
Great, so they can get paid on time.
Correct. It doesn't delay the, the cost. If we find that that was an error, then we would bring it back as a correction versus delaying them getting paid at this point.
Right. I think this is being offered, Ms. Jones, as a friendly amendment. Any concerns from the motion maker on the friendly amendment? Okay, so the, the superintendent's report is on the floor as amended. Any other discussion or questions about the superintendent's report? Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolden?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. We are on item I, Report of the Treasurer. Is there a motion to adopt the treasurer's report for this evening?
So moved.
Thank you, Vice President Craig. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Any discussion or questions about the treasurer's reports? Mrs. Weinberg.
I might just have one question. I think it's in section F. If you could just explain what the other purchase services are, or what does that include?
I'm sorry, what page are you looking at?
So it's section F. Let me pull it up. It's on page six. It's in section two, then announce certificates, and it's F. Securitas Security Sir USA Inc. And for the explanation, what are the other purchase services?
So Securitas is our outsourced service that does nighttime security services, and the other purchase services just references the General Ledger Account Code. It just doesn't fit into other.
I'm so sorry, I was listening to someone else. Can you repeat that?
Securitas is a outsourced vendor that provides nighttime security for the district. The other purchase services just references the General Ledger Account Code that fits under other purchase services rather than instructional services or legal services.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments in the treasurer's report? Ms. Bolden?
Yes, if the treasurer would explain, I think it's on page eight, and it speaks to the facilities management, the construction company, and the amount, and then the explanation as to the sources of that, those funds.
I couldn't hear the last part of your question.
Oh, the sources of those funds for the three million seven hundred and-
Yes.
Forty-seven thousand.
Yes. So I also wanted to note that this is a revised treasurer's report, so that, this is the revision, okay? So several months ago, actually several months ago, the board agreed to do a remodel over one of its, on their cafe. The budget in the SRO fund is five-point-nine million. This three-point-seven represents this fiscal year's portion of that five-point-nine million. And there was a little bit of confusion over that two-year contract versus one-year amount, and that's why it was delayed, and it didn't make the deadline to get in the treasurer's report, but because it's time-sensitive, we wanted to make sure it got adopted tonight.
Thank you. So this represents, it's a part of the total, it is not in addition to the total.
That's correct.
Thank you. And then this is the cafe, and these are SRO funds.
These are SRO funds, yes, ma'am.
And this is strictly for the cafe? Does it have anything to do with the classrooms or anything like that?
This is just the cafe.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Bolden. Any other questions on the treasurer's revised treasurer's report?
I bet you're mad at yourself.
Wish it were on purpose. With hearing no other questions or discussions, Ms. Wagner, would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Bolden?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
President Lindy?
Yes. Okay, thank you, everyone. We are on to the kind of back half of our agenda this evening. We have two items on board matters. Both of these came from Ms. Bolden. Would you like to frame up your topics for us?
Yes, the, the first one I'd like to talk about while it's at the top of my head, so I can get some of these examples. I think it would be important for us as, as a board to review and have the administration soon brief us on those agreements that are agreements between the school district and some of our partners or particular vendors or particular, maybe MOUs that are, are still out there. I think it would be important to know what kinds of agreements are up this year, and that's not contracts as such, but agreements. And to give some examples, the Cincinnati Preschool Promise Agreement is, is up, and we've been properly delaying it for a bit, and that's up. We may need to start regarding community reinvestment agreements because that's up, and that's something Mr. Morosky keeps reminding us. There's also an annual, annually reviewed, and I think this is the second year of a two-year to review and sign off on the SORDA slash Metro agreement that we have. Also, the board, after, you know, eighteen months or more regarding SROs and the future, made a decision, moved ahead, and then sent it to policy for review, and I know policy brought back a review of the MOU, but I think it's been brought back, and I think we probably need to perhaps find a, a conclusion to that. And then there, there are others as well that perhaps are there, that was MOU regarding how many class periods at high schools. I think it would be great to be able to kind of take things off the list, conclude business. Some of these might impact the budget development, but certainly it, it's a time as we start this calendar year and are in the midst of our, our school year, maybe, and maybe this can be an assignment based upon whatever the discussion is of the board to have the, the administration put a list together. While the administration negotiates it, we don't negotiate it, but indeed, we, you know, may set some parameters, and I think we have done that in the past, I know we have done that in the past, and I know we've talked through some of these, but I just think it's important for the board to be reminded that we have these agreements and, and kind of set the administration into continuing their work and reporting to us so that we take things off the list.
Thank you, Ms. Bolden. I, I heard you mention Cincinnati Preschool Promise, community reinvestment agreements, SROs. Are there any others in particular that are top of mind here?
My top of mind is the annual SORDA Metro. You'll recall during our, the beginning of the crisis that we had, we did not sign off on that agreement, and we were both SORDA and the board were operating without signing off on it. I think we're in the, getting ready to start the second year of two years. It's not, and the general counsel always explains to the board, it's not really a contract, it's an agreement that we review annually and either say yes or no, or don't sign off, but I, I think that one's important because of having gone through what we've gone through this year, and it's all the work that's been done, and maybe there are some things that we might want to change or add or correct, or things that need some consideration. So that, that would be one of them particularly, and the, the preschool promise one is sort of at the end, not a preschool promise, but the end of that agreement, whereas the community reinvestment agreements would be the start of those negotiations coming up. And I'm sure there are others that the administration knows certainly better than I.
Thank you, Ms. Bolden. I do want to hear from our superintendent in a moment, and I think before we do that, I just want to ask, are there other board members who have either questions from Ms. Bolden or other thoughts on the topic? And then I want to give the superintendent a moment to ask her own questions. Mr. Morosky?
Just second everything Ms. Bolden said, and just highlight the piece about the agreement with the city during the taxes, particularly in light of President Sellers' comments about the expanded abatements, and I've said this numerous times, so just say it one more time, I guess. We have a, we have a good relationship with the city, I think, at this point. I think we have folks who are amenable to these issues, and we have a mayor who's amenable to these issues, and it's an election year, so I think it's a good time to start these conversations.
Thank you, from the board member who's not running for reelection in twenty-twenty-three. Thank you, Mr. Morosky.
You're more than welcome.
Are there any other board members who have questions or comments they'd like to tag on? Superintendent, do you have any thoughts on your end?
Thank you. If it's the will of the board, I think that we will have to make sure that we have covered all of the areas and getting, you know, I also included crossing guards, while that's not a contract, so to speak. It is one. while that's not a contract, so to speak. It is one. But just listing out what those different areas may be, I think it'd be beneficial for us to do that, and then, you know, provide some information to the Board. Hopefully, we can get as comprehensive as we're looking for.
Thank you. I think that sounds good. For the last six months or so, we've been trying to get clearer on assignments being made in public with the support of the full Board, either through a vote or just an obvious consensus. I don't hear any concerns from any Board members. You have none from me. I just want to check, any other concerns? Yeah, Mrs. Weinberg?
So the question, when will we get this information?
How long do you think putting something together like this might take?
Honestly, I need to review how comprehensive the list would be. So I would ask that at least give us until next month to give an update for, you know, where we are right now. If we're talking about these three or four things, that would be pretty easy to do. But as I think about, you know, auditing across the Board, maybe the MOUs and the agreements, it may be more comprehensive. So I think an initial update by our last Board meeting next month would be fair.
I think that sounds pretty reasonable. Thank you, Board members. Thank you, Superintendent. And Treasurer Wagner, if that could be reflected in the assignments section of the minutes, when those minutes come out, that would be great. Thank you. Item 2, Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, this is particularly short. All Board members know that we're in the midst of budget work. The administration's been hard at work on it, and a lot of specific ideas. I just wanted to emphasize to the Board members that not only following what's going on, but be thinking in terms of, based upon the work in your committees, or what you hear from the community, what are Board members' interests or perspectives on the budget, and how can we help get ready for what we will have to be deciding on when the administration presents, and also not wait necessarily to say yes or no to the end product, but certainly are there ways that we could have any public discussion about some of our priorities, or some of the things that we are hearing from the community they'd like to see? The Superintendent mentioned, you know, and we've said often that doing a lot of this work in public, and the transparency, and public's business done in public, indeed the community does chime in, and the people directly affected chime in. It's just so important that Board members themselves chime in and try to figure out what is of the greatest interest or importance to serve our families and our kids. So kind of get your budget hats on, and keep your ear to the ground as to what we might be able to do to help the budget process along. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Is there a request for tonight on this front? There doesn't have to be. I just wanted to make sure.
No, my request is that, having gone to a couple of the transportation roundtables, having participated in these fabulous town halls on finance, and the specificity of the work that is being done in so many committees and on the Board itself, I just think that we have a chance for a transformative budget. This is very, very important, and everything we have to face is almost part of the whole system. It's a whole system, and I think that we need to be thinking in terms of it being a transformative budget. And I've, I'll share this, as an individual Board member, I've been suggesting and teasing, both the Superintendent and the Treasurer, about, I don't know that the process can be done by June 30th, and of course, they disagree, but I just kind of want to keep it out there as to how huge this is going to be. It's not going to be anything that looks like anything we've seen in the past. Just be more positive, and also challenging.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Any comments or questions from Ms. Bolton before we keep going? Okay, Vice President Craig?
I just want to maybe echo something that Ms. Bolton was talking about, which is just this idea that we have an opportunity to do something tremendously different. And I think part of that is driven by the conversations we had previously about what are our priorities, what are the things that we want and expect out of our budget. And I want to thank the Treasurer for kind of leading that conversation earlier, because I think that is a different way of also thinking about the budget, is that recognizing that you can't do everything. And so what, start setting those priorities as to what is important and what's not important. And so I think that speaks a little bit to what is Bolton's talking about, about us having a transformative budget this year that really reflects those conversations and those thoughts.
Thank you, Vice President Craig. If there are no other comments, anything from our administration? Good, okay, we're going to keep on moving. We are at item K, which are inquiries and updates. Are there any inquiries or updates this evening? Ms. Jones?
Yes, I have a couple. One inquiry for the Superintendent and one for the Board. Can we get an update on the status of the nomination process to replace the person on C, on Preschool Promise Board that represents the district? Okay. And then my second inquiry is to the Board, and this is again regarding Cincinnati Preschool Promise. We've not, it's been a long time since we've had a collaborative meeting. Is there still, is that something we still want to do? Is it time to do one? I don't know what people are feeling like in terms of that, but, you know, I'm just trying to determine if we need to get back on schedule, on a regular routine of having the collaborative meeting.
I think my first question on that front, thank you for the question, Ms. Jones, is to make sure we're following what's required in the contract, or in, I guess it would be the contract. And this was from before my time, you may know, or the administration may know. How frequently do we need to have a joint meeting?
Was it, I don't, I think it was. But it is, it should, yeah, it was pre-co, but it is the regular meeting. Yeah, but I just can't remember exactly. Maybe twice a year. Yeah, it could be. I'm just not sure.
I mean, I would, I would be, it doesn't have to be me. This could be anybody who would like to do this, or it could be a member of the administration, but to figure out, I mean, there's been some, for different kinds of reasons, changes in Board leadership there, and changes in administrative leadership there, and we're in the process of renegotiating that agreement at the same time. So, and I can understand for a number of reasons why this may not have happened. But I'd be happy to contact them and figure out what are our obligations, and then what could a next meeting time be, if that's helpful.
If we do, we do have something in writing to reference that, in case you don't have. I'll dig in my files and make sure I copy you, or I'll ask staff to dig in the files. You'll get it.
That sounds great. I would appreciate that, and I'm happy to reach out and make sure we're doing that. Did you have a second item, Ms. Jones?
I did, too.
You did, you too. All right. Mrs. Weinberg?
Yeah, so my quick question is, a couple of months ago, at a Board meeting, we discussed hosting a Board meeting in the community, or at one of the schools. And I know that this is probably my second time bringing it up, so I'm going to bring it up for a third time. Can we possibly discuss, possibly come up with a date or next steps on that?
Thank you, Ms. Weinberg. Superintendent?
We actually did identify the schools to host the meeting, the schools that would be the best location to host the meeting. I think I can follow up with the Board President and determine what the dates would be, so that we have enough time to notify the community that that's where we'll be. So if we can follow up on that tomorrow, Board President, that's fine.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Weinberg?
And then just as a follow-up to that, then you'll just, of course, share that with us in terms of the possible dates that you all are thinking of as well?
Thank you.
Mrs. Weinberg, can you just, I missed the second one. Can you say it one more time?
Sharing that date with us.
Yes, once we have that, we will send that out to everybody. Mr. Morosky?
Thank you, President Lindy. What I wanted to do, I'm going to give you a small, brief update. First Cincinnati REC meeting last week, and high-level things we discussed, there was a lot of updates on the emergency shelters that we kept open when it got really, really cold there right around Christmas time. So the staff there did a really, really, really awesome job. Other big items that would be pertinent to this group, probably, some capital improvements coming up to College Hill and to Wynton Hills facilities regarding the floor improvements and some other items. We then assigned to committees, and Policy Chair, CRC now, too. So I'm grateful for that. The Policy Committee didn't exist all last year for a whole host of reasons, but now it does. And the good news for us, and you remember me talking about this last year a couple of times, I hope, is that we'll really start to have a concerted effort and conversation regarding what are our relationships with the various REC centers, particularly at places where we have a campus sort of feel like a cans. FLM Taylor come to mind first, where we're right there with each other. Or shared facilities, or shared projects. What are the policies? What do the agreements look like? To Ms. Bolton's point, I would slap this on that list, actually. Not financial, necessarily, but there is, there is a lot of interaction between our staff and their staff, and our families, and our kids. And it really is, unfortunately, it's the way the world in large organizations, it's often left up to individual centers, how they're working with schools, and there's really not a lot of uniformity. And not to surprise anyone, I'm not necessarily a huge fan of uniformity, but sometimes, you know, that benefits the families better. So stay tuned for that. That is largely what I will be working on all year in that policy role. And then lastly, I got a quick call with Tiffany Stewart, who some of you may know. She's a program and outreach coordinator for the REC Center. We're talking Friday, because they're having a big career expo. Unsurprisingly, we're having a lot of trouble hiring people at the REC Centers, not just the lifeguards, which everybody hears about every year, to everything. And so for the Superintendent, you'll be getting more of this, because this is not going to be my role, but I'm going to talk to her on Friday, figure out what they're talking about, and then get with you to see who the best person here would be to get our students involved in the career expo, et cetera. So just a heads up on that.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Other items from Board members? Vice President Craig?
I was just going to ask Mike a question, actually, but then he actually hit it. So I thought it was a great point of the expo, because I do think that's something that we have, they have struggled with hiring, and I think that's something we can really help with, for students who I've talked with over the years who didn't even know about opportunities in some of the places that were near them. So, you know, it's great that you brought that up.
Other inquiries or updates? Ms. Bolton?
Just a follow-up to that before I give my update or inquiry, I guess it is. A thousand years ago, CPS, they had this, that means that it was when I was in high school, so that's really what it means, in the 1960s. They had a wonderful program, it's kind of interesting with recreation folks. It was called Earn and Learn. And that earn and learn, they were good. I'm not alone. Thank God. So we have a caucus of two. It was a great program. It started kids that, you know, would apply, and they would be selected for part-time employment during the school year. They might get some release during the week, maybe, you know, an afternoon or whatever. And then it would continue, for those that were successful with it, would continue through the summer, and that they would earn monies. And much of it was, okay, the police force, the recreation centers, the park board, corporations, nonprofits, what have you. And I just think that we don't tap our colleagues in the public sector quite enough for employment of our young people. But I'm so glad that career piece made me think of it. Now, on the other hand, what I was going to really inquire about is that Board members will remember that we changed a few years ago the test for Walnut. And when we did that, we got fewer and fewer kids qualified, and indeed, sent families away from this district, which we cannot afford to do. And we kept doing that particular test. I think one or two years, the Board was able to convince the Superintendent and maybe the interim, it was two years, to change the cut score or what have you, recognizing that if so many of our kids weren't passing, it must be partly our fault, not just theirs. And also, in addition to that, the, someone in the administration extended the RFP for the very test company that had changed the situation or the results. They didn't change the results, but apparently it was more difficult, or we weren't preparing the kids. It was also, actually, a change of test. I'm just inquiring as to the Walnut Hills test results. I am, and I think want to go on record, that we return to a cut score that does not send so many families away and disappoint so many students. And it is, it might be this rigor thing, but it also has to be some issue, because these children are succeeding where they're going. So teenagers are succeeding. So I have a question, maybe it's an assignment. I would like to know the status of the Walnut Hills testing. And it's on the student achievement count, which is always where it is, had been, but even there, even when student achievement committee members argued about this cut score, at least two years, it didn't get done. And I don't want to see that again.
So the request is to have an update on the status, like what the test is, and what the approach to cut scores are?
Yes, and indeed, now the former Vice President reminds me that now with Cal, we have the whole Board. So that's good on that, because first, if we go through a couple of months at Cal, which only was, I mean, at student achievement. So yes, I guess I am in hopes that this administration will review the situation and indeed make it possible for our students to engage and attend Walnut Hills with the adjustment or whatever of a cut score. And that RFP is now done, so I'm assuming there's a new RFP to find some other test provider or vendor, because it was, last year was its extended year, I think.
I think we could certainly make sure this is on an upcoming agenda. I also want to invite, if there's anything the Superintendent does want to share?
Correct. The overall assessment this year, there was, it was extended last year for the student assessment, but it is open this year, so that we would engage with the RFP. So it actually hasn't posted yet, but it is up to post for this year.
Thank you so much for that, and thanks in advance for us figuring out a better way to serve our students and families regarding the results of those tests.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Thank you, Superintendent Wright. Are there any other inquiries or updates? No, we've had, I think, one assignment so far, which will get reflected in the minutes. Ms. Wagner might have another inquiry?
Well, an update, that a little friend texted said that the CPP was twice a year rotating hosts, and it's their turn to host.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll still work to get a date for everybody, but it'll be their turn to host. Great. Okay, Dr. Moffett?
So I just wanted to give a small update. We were, I've been in discussion with Council, and we were trying to come up with a kudos for people that have asked Board members to acknowledge them, but it's not really a resolutionable item. And so we're going to be working with the administration to design like a district kudos. And so we've already got our first recipient, and hopefully we'll be able to do that. We were just thinking of, when things don't need to be voted on by the Board, someone wants a recognition at a Board meeting, we were thinking of just like a kudos. So I think the Superintendent is also looking at kind of doing that on a broader level as well, but just like, they want to be acknowledged during kudos and updates, but it's not formalized as a resolution. The other thing that I wanted to bring up again is it's that time of year where we will, we're planning our joint meeting with the city and CPS. And the Vice Mayor brought it up, that we need to start planning that again. So if there is interest in a particular date... So if there is interest in a particular date, let myself or Vice President Craig know, but we will enter into those discussions. I think we had a great first joint meeting. It was very well attended. And I don't know if it was attended well in person, but for certain, the views afterwards were plentiful. So definitely think the community would like to have more of that. And there's plenty for us to discuss. For example, crossing guards, money, and getting more opportunities to collaborate. So that will be upcoming February and or March. And the last thing that I'd like to say as a kudos to inquiry update, I'm not exactly sure. But I think that we had a great financial town hall in collaboration with the treasurer. I helped facilitate that. And we've got really good reception from the community. I think not necessarily in person, although you wouldn't be able to tell. But watching the views afterwards and all of the analytical data shows that people are very interested. And when they do ask questions about ESER, I direct them back to our September 18th meeting because we spent a lot of time talking about that and the information is really, really good. So thanks to Treasurer Wagner for allowing me the opportunity to facilitate. We do have another one coming up soon. And we were joined by Board Member Bolton and the Superintendent while we spoke about the budget. So if you do have any questions about that, make sure that you tune in and watch that as well. I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If we don't have any other last inquiries or updates, we'll move to assignments. I know we have the one around the district agreements that we talked about earlier. I don't have any others. Are there any other requests for assignments? Okay, hearing no others, we are at kudos. Does anyone have any announcements? Some of those came through in the inquiries and updates section. Any kudos who would like to share this evening? Mrs. Weinberg, and then we'll go to Ms. Bolton next. This is on assignments. Well, what I was taking away is that we'll make sure it's on an upcoming agenda. I want to make sure we have the same understanding for different requests.
Yes, I captured an update on the test.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Mrs. Weinberg was going to go, and then we'll get Mr. Morosky.
Yeah, so I'll be really quick with my kudos. I just want to give a huge kudos to the School of Creative and Performing Arts. There were several board members that attended there. I wanted to make sure I got the title correct. The SCPA Future of the Arts Gala on Friday. It was an amazing event. We got the chance to hear some great music. And also the students were involved and alumni, they were involved as well. So just a big, huge kudos to them.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Mr. Morosky.
Thank you for the town last week. And so I played hooky with my son on Thursday. I kept him home and I went to the Cincinnati Museum Center. And there was nobody there because it was a beautiful day and it was a Thursday, except for two huge buses from Reese Price. The museum center was my son and a bunch of teachers and kids from Reese Price in the, the chaotic, controlled chaotic children's portion museum. And everybody was awesome. There were a ton of kids. James would go play with the older kids. They were very nice to them. So, you know, it's not often I run into a massive group of our students and teachers in the wild, and they have no clue who I am or care, which they shouldn't, even if they did know who I am, to be perfectly honest. And it was just really cool to be there for like two hours with all of these students and teachers. And everyone was just so kind. I was there with my old parents and my young kid. And no, they, people couldn't have been kinder, and it was just a cool thing to see. And the surprise kudos, I guess, to, felt like the whole school. So kudos to y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Other kudos? Vice President Craig.
So as I mentioned earlier, it was on this Saturday, was the 24, or the first, Saturday, the 21st, was the first Cincinnati High School Ethics Center, Cincinnati High School Ethics Bowl. But I want to give a kudos out to two of our local schools that participated. The competition actually was open to schools across the district. They reached out to a number of different schools, or across the greater Cincinnati area. They reached out to a number of schools. No school prior to this had actually, and CPS had a ethics bowl team. And so two schools put together ethics bowl teams, both Dater and Walnuts. And at the first competition with, I believe it was five different schools or six different schools, Walnut actually finished first. So they won the first annual high school ethics bowl. So I want to give them a good kudos there, my alma mater. And just to give a little bit of a background of what ethics bowl was, is they're given 15 cases where they have to look at the different issues and be able to discuss the ethical and moral issues around them. They're then challenged to respond to questions and explain those, their, their thoughts around their decisions and give an opportunity to even sometimes cases, you know, questions may lead you to change your thoughts about whether or not something's ethical or moral. And so, and they're not told which cases they will have before the round. So it's, they have to be prepared for all 15. So it was a great competition on that Saturday. And we look forward to having more of our high schools be a part of this, so that they can all benefit from it. But it's something that the Cincinnati Ethics Center has been working with our local teachers and schools. And so we want to highlight the work of the two schools, both Dater and Walnuts. And then just remind everybody that there are these lovely bags here with sizes between medium and extra-large in shirts that y'all can pick up, that also include the letter from the program manager, who's joining us today. Thanking, you know, all of our wonderful students and giving a little bit more information about what happened on that wonderful day.
Thank you very much, Vice President Craig. And congratulations again to the students and the staff. Any other last announcements or kudos? Superintendent Wright.
Only one. I would like to celebrate and recognize our students. Today started the awards, the Marion Spencer Awards for our students that will be attending the University of Cincinnati. So we were able to start this morning by surprising one of our students from Withrow. And there were three other visits today. There'll be visits throughout the week. But it was just an amazing experience. And our goal is to have them come here for an upcoming board meeting, so the board will be able to recognize them in person as well.
That's awesome. Thank you very much and congratulations to those families. Any other last announcements or kudos? Okay, having no other business before us, I declare our meeting adjourned.